Welcome, everyone, to the May 28th
(inaudible)
City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here and at home. We're going to start out our we're going to start out our meeting this evening with the by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag on Honor Memorial Day. Before we begin, I'd like to read an excerpt from President Obama's Memorial Day proclamation. "Since our nation's earliest days, America has been blessed with an unbroken chain of patriots who have served our country with honor and distinction. From Concord to Korengal, generations of brave warriors have fought for freedom across sand and snow, over mud and mountains, into lonely deserts, and through crowded streets. On Memorial Day, we remember those we have lost, not only for what they fought for, but for who they were, proud Americans, often far too young, guided by deep and abiding love for their families, for each other, and for this country. Our debt to them is one that we can never fully repay. But we can honor their sacrifice and strive to be a nation equal to their example. On this and every day, we must meet our obligations to families of the fallen. We must uphold our sacred trust with our veterans, our service members, and their loved ones. Above all, we can honor those we have lost by living up to the ideals they died defending. It is our charge to preserve liberty, to advance justice, and to sow the seeds of peace. With courage and devotion worthy of the heroes we remember today, let us rededicate ourselves to these unending tasks and prove once more that America's best days are still ahead. Let us pray the souls of those who died and wore rest in eternal peace, and let us keep them and their families close in our hearts now and forever." And now it's my pleasure to introduce a group of students from Bridgeway House, who will lead us in reciting the pledge. Bridgeway House is a private school that educates children affected by autism spectrum disorder or other related disabilities in grades K through 12. The school offers treatments, developmental therapies, enrichment courses, and support to children and families of all levels affected by autism and related disabilities. With us tonight are J.J. Hicks, Tate Morden, Isaac Haverkamp, Mason Bryant, and Russell Reenie, and their teacher Patricia Wigney. And if all of you would just come up here and stand behind us, you can lead the pledge for us.
Hi, J.J.
Hi, J.J., nice to see you.
Hi, Russell.
Hi.
All right. So, get the flag, boys, and move our hearts. You guys are going to press time. So I'll say one, two, three.
I am Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where there stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's okay. We're glad to be here.
We're glad you're here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
J.J., right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you all very, very much.
The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of your three minutes. I'm going to open the public forum. And I have five people signed up to speak. First is Nick Mall, followed by Haley Ford. Nick?
Mm-hmm.
Please come on up and have a seat right there.
I'm Nick Mall, from the Spencer-Butte Green Team.
Hello, I'm Haley Ford, from the Spencer-Butte Green Team also.
And we're here to talk about our opinion as youth on global warming and climate change. So, knock, knock.
Who's there?
Endangered species.
Endangered species, so. In the time it's taken us to say this joke, there's a species going endangered or extinct.
And in the time it'll take us to this presentation, there are a lot of things that will happen, both in the city and in the world. In the past, we've had we recently hit the 400 parts per million of carbon levels in the air, which is a pretty big deal, because we haven't seen this in about 2 to 3 million years. We've had the proposal for the coal trains to come through in Oregon, and we've had the proposal for the Keystone XL pipeline in our nation. On the brighter side, we've also had a lot of technological breakthroughs and a lot of technological downsides, but we are progressing together as a nation to become a better nation and city environmentally.
This is important personally to me, because this is my world, and it is also your world. The more we do to our world to affect it in negative ways, the worse it's going to be for the people, the generations after me, after all of us, and continuing on. And if this trends continue, I fear that humans could, at drastic measures, go extinct or live in very, very bad conditions.
So Haley and I have both been doing a lot in the community ourselves to change the world. We volunteer a lot of our time for our school, for our school's green team, for events, to help represent our school as a premier green school. At school, we have the Green Team, which is a 20 a group of 20 or so students that we dedicate our time to help reduce the waste at the school, because we recycle our milk cartons. And last year, we reduced our school's waste by 75 percent by helping putting out composting centers and recycling centers throughout the school. I help with the lettuce program, which we harvest and grow our own lettuce to sell to our school's cafeteria. It's pretty fun, and I learn a lot about what I can do in the future and help save the world. We also have a Walk with Bike Month going on at our school right now, where we tally up the number of students that have found an alternative way of coming to school, such as walking or taking the bike, instead of getting a ride in the car.
Although teens like Nick and I have made large strides towards becoming a CO2-perfect zone, we still need other people's help. If we don't get the word out and talk to people and do events like this, then how are people going to know? It's my world, it's your world, it's all of our world. We're asking you to help us in getting a getting our world to a perfect, safe place.
That's all we have.
Thank you both. Thank you. So I just want to say, I don't have oh, you guys, thank you. There's no timer on in front of me.
Only one of them is working.
Nothing, I can't see anything. So I don't know where we are.
Oh, that one just came on.
It just came on.
OFF is
Just needed to hit it.
When you hit it, it went on. Good job.
All right.
Leave one for the speakers.
Keep that one facing the
Yeah, one for speakers.
OFF is now the frequency
Okay.
Actually, that's how I fix things.
Magic. Megan Kemble is next, followed by David Guzara.
Hi there. I came My name is Megan Kemble. I live in Eugene. I'm in Ward 1. And I came with those young people. And I just want to thank you first for your support of exploration of a study for the study bill at the state level to explore a carbon tax at the state level. I think it's a really important first step. I'm here to let you know that you will, in the coming months, be asked to consider a resolution to support a carbon tax or carbon pricing at the regional level. And I want to ask you, on behalf of those young people and the many, many young people in this community who are not here, asking you to take action on their behalf, to take that resolution very seriously and to support it as a way of mitigating climate change.
David Guzara is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
Hey, my name is David Guzara. I live in Ward 2, represented by Councilwoman Betty Taylor. I'm a member of the City of Eugene Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, advising the City of Eugene Transportation Planning Staff and Community Organizations on projects with walking and biking components. I want to let you know what BPAC's been up to lately. We extensively examined the design options of the South Willamette Street Improvement Plan, and we recommend two of them. We recommend Option 3, which includes three motor vehicle lanes, two bicycle lanes, and nine-foot sidewalks on each side of the street. We recommend Option 5, which includes three motor vehicle lanes and 13-foot sidewalks on each side of the street. But we added a recommendation that staff explore a cycle track for this option. As defined in the City of Eugene Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, cycle track is an exclusive bicycle facility adjacent to but separated from the roadway. This could occur within the 13-foot sidewalks. We have utmost confidence that our talented, knowledgeable city planning staff could make this a reality. We are recommending options for South Willamette that include a biking, walking, motor vehicle, and public transit component. Nothing less can help this dynamic, vital neighborhood thrive and attain its full potential as a place Euginians drive to and through. The citizens of Eugene deserve nothing less. Members of BPAC met with Brian Ferentz of the Halt Center and Michael Pennwell of the City of Eugene Facility Management, and toured and discussed bicycle parking facility at the Halt Center for the Performing Arts. City code requires 279 bike parking spaces. APPB, the Bible for Bicycle Parking, suggests 122. Currently, there are 18 spaces for a venu that seats 2,450 in the Silver Concert Hall and 495 spaces in Soaring Theater. We identified areas that would provide safe and convenient bike parking expansion and have begun the dialogue and process to make the Halt Center, Eugene's cultural heart, easier to bike to. If you've ever been one of the hundreds of cyclists trying to park their bikes near the Halt Center during the Bock Festival, you'll appreciate the irony of participants and attendees who have traveled from other parts of the world with far better bike facilities expressing surprise that Eugene is considered bike-friendly. Another issue on the radar at BPAC is the problem with schoolchildren crossing 30th Street to get to and from Camus Ridge Elementary. We strongly recommend the city council and the mayor encourage attention to and speedy resolutions for this school zone. The children in this neighborhood desperately need a safe route to cross to school at 30th. Thank you.
Last up, Ally Valkyrie.
Hi, Ally Valkyrie. I'd like to talk about the Downtown Guides. First, I'd like to clear up this common misperception that the Downtown Guides are privately funded. They are publicly funded. They've been publicly funded since 1994. They're funded through the Downtown Services District Fee, which is a fee passed in 1994 and enforced through city ordinance. The city collects the fee from downtown property owners, keeps a small percentage, and gives the rest to Downtown Eugene Incorporated, which runs the Downtown Guides Program. For fiscal year 2012, $277,000 of public money went to DEI for the Downtown Guides Program, and the Downtown Guides Program cost over $200,000. When this ordinance was passed in 1994, the justification was that there was only one police officer downtown, and we couldn't afford more police officers downtown. And the Downtown Guides were going to quote work as the eyes and ears of the police department. We are now in 2013, where there are nine police officers downtown. And to say the Downtown Guides are irrelevant, I think, is putting it lightly. I've been watching their behavior for the past three years, and I can't tell you how many times I've seen them shoo homeless people away, threaten them with arrest, threaten to call the police, and then lean against the very walls where the homeless people were staying. Last month, at around 9:00 in the morning on a Saturday, my partner John Monroe watched a Downtown Guide kick a sleeping homeless man who was sleeping in the vestibule of the Jacquin Wheatley Law Firm at 8:35 East Park Street. He was completely on private property. He was not on the sidewalk. He was kicked by a Downtown Guide by the name of Kyle Love. I dialogued with Dave Hauser, who runs the Downtown Guides Program, back and forth for a couple weeks. Mr. Hauser quote calls it a "soft tap with the foot." And it is Mr. Hauser's opinion that the Downtown Guides are perfectly fine doing this, and that this is part of their job, even though it was on private property. Now, this piece of private property does not have a trespass letter of consent signed. This private property owner did not give any consent whatsoever for the Downtown Guides to be removing someone from private property. The Eugene Police are not allowed to remove people from private property without a signed trespass letter. Why are the Downtown Guides allowed to softly tap people with their foot on private property? And the answer I got was, well, the property owners pay a fee. It's a mandatory fee. It's a tax. These property owners do not consent to having someone kicked. And for $200,000 of taxpayer money to be paid for by for thugs, and I'm saying thug not as an insult, I'm saying thug is a technical term, as a bully who goes around and kicks people on private property. The fact that $200,000 of taxpayer money is being paid for these little men in red hats to go around and kick homeless people on private property is absolutely outrageous. There's nothing in the ordinance that mandates that that money go to DEI. And my suggestion is that we reappropriate that money for a downtown service that actually helps the taxpayers instead of kicking them. Thank you.
Close the forum. And just want to say, first of all, I'm sorry that the students left before we got to thank them. They did a great job, and I really appreciate them taking the time to come and talk with us. And I also thank you, BPAC, for coming and updating us on what's going on. Appreciate both of those things. Anybody else have any comments? Counselor Taylor?
Yes, I appreciated the students also, and also David Guzara's things about bicycle. But one thing he brought up was the crossing of 30th. I know there was a meeting about that, which I wasn't none of us were able to attend because we were in another meeting. But I'd like to report on what happened at that sometime soon.
We'd all like that. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Thank you all very much. Consent Calendar is next. Counsel President.
I move to approve the items on the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Motion seconded. Yes.
We have a legal obligation to approve council minutes. These are all now webcast and preserved in an archive for anybody who'd want to do that. Or do we need to continue to do this? Yes. Okay, thanks.
Was that an attorney speaking?
Learned that from Emily. Yeah. Just tried to emulate her.
One more answer from an attorney.
I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. We have one counselor who's absent today, so that's 7. And none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. Next up is a public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is on extending the Temporary Multi-Unit Property Tax Exemptant, or MPT, program suspension. The proposed ordinance provides the extension from June 30th to July 31st. Based on council's last session on MPT, council may want to consider amending the ordinance to August 31st. And that's all.
I'm going to open this public hearing, and we have one person signed up.
Thank you. Name's Dennis Cassidy, Ward 2. I'm in support of extending indefinitely, possibly, the MPT. I think we all need to ask ourselves, would the this last election have been necessary if the MPT was not in effect? When the MPT's in effect, it's a hindrance for the school district. It's a hindrance of collection of funds for the county, as well as the city. And I think it would be interesting to know where where we would stand financially if the MPT was not in place. Thank you.
Close the public hearing and ask if anyone has any comments to make. Okay, none with not. I'll move on to the next item. The next item is on ordinance amending the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is action on a proposed metroplan boundary amendment to adjust the boundary on the Springfield side of the plan. The amendment, under consideration, would reduce the size of the metroplan boundary on the east side of I-5. The resulting metroplan boundary that would be co-terminous with the Springfield urban growth boundary. This proposal only pertains to the Springfield side of the metroplan boundary, and this council discussed this item at their May 13, 2013 work session.
Counsel President, you want to put a motion out?
Yeah, I move to adopt Council Bill 5067, an ordinance amending the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan, Metro Plan.
Second.
Seconded. Counselor Brown.
Are we going to discuss this before we vote? Okay. Well, my first question is, why would we voluntarily give up decision-making power when we don't have to, which we would be doing if we approved this? So, you know, you could say, well, it's Springfield. They should be able to do what they want, and the county should be without any interference from us. But that's part of the part of the idea of regional planning, is all three are supposed to weigh in on things. And so if we it was clear to me from the last discussion, you know, a couple weeks ago when we talked about this, that it's just a prelude to approve this, then the next request will be to approve the same thing on our side of I-5 for all this property out by the airport and these parcels up here by, you know, by Santa Clara and north of the airport. And then the rationale will be, well, hey, we did it for Springfield. We should do it for you guys, too. And I think that that's giving up way too much decision-making authority, so I will vote against this proposal.
Counsel Polling.
Well, to try to answer your question, Counsel Brown, and somebody can jump in if I get this wrong, but because of House Bill 3337, which basically has caused us now to split on decision-making as far as the urban growth boundaries of Springfield and Eugene, the decisions are made on their own. However, because of the metroplan, we are still required to vote on it, which doesn't make any sense. What would happen what we need to have happen is to amend the metroplan to kind of conform with 3337. Just because Springfield has decided to extend their urban growth boundary, to me, I look at this vote as I don't want to say a rubber stamp, but say a formality, more or less. Now, as far as what we do with our urban growth boundary, it has no bearing on what Springfield did, because that is our decision if we need to expand, if we don't. So it's actually kind of two different two different questions, which are still tied together by the metroplan, but have been divided by 3337. And I don't know if I can make it any clearer than that.
I would just add that I think it's still important for us to do regional planning, just doing it in a different way now. We still have MPC, and we still have all a lot of other ways that we they act, a lot of ways that we communicate with each other over decisions. And I wouldn't want anyone to take away from this that if we council decides to vote yes on this, that means they're going to vote no on a proposal that is about the City of Eugene.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I And then Counselor Zelenka.
I really appreciate Counselor Polling's context, because I know we'd gotten that briefing before, but it's easy to forget the technicalities. And I also understand Counselor Brown's position, and I agree. I'm fine with doing this. It is a formality, in a sense. It's a decision that Springfield made, and I wouldn't want to presuppose that decision for them. But that also doesn't presuppose what this council's going to do, given the same conversation. And I think it will probably go quite differently than how it went over in Springfield, particularly given that some of the land we're talking about is where our airport is. And I'm not going to be willing to give up authority over planning around the airport. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Counselor Zelenka.
I was going to say what Claire said. I don't see anything.
Sorry.
Counselor Taylor.
What happens if we vote against this?
If it fails.
Correct. Then it doesn't pass. This would require Land County, City of Springfield and
I mean, what happens to Springfield's plans? What will be different if we vote against this?
If you vote against it, then the metroplan boundary does not change.
There would also be an additional process piece. If the three jurisdictions don't agree on an ordinance like this, then the issue goes to MPC for dispute resolution. MPC tries to come up with a compromise that works for all three, and then it goes back to each of the jurisdictions, each of the city councils or county board, commissioners, to decide whether to approve what MPC came up with. So if the council votes no, it's not the end of the process. It actually extends the process.
Yeah. And what can they do that they can't do now if we vote
What can the county
Springfield do that they can't do if we vote if it's not voted for?
If the council and the board approve this so that this amendment goes into effect, then there's nothing additional that Springfield can do, because this contracts Springfield's authority, just like it would contract your authority. It gives the county board the authority over the lands outside of what will be a shrunken metroplan boundary to be the final decision-maker, except for those items that Springfield and the county have agreed as part of an IGA. And I see Len Goodwin in the audience. So if you have questions about the IGA, I think Len is the right person to answer those. So there's some decision-making authority that Springfield would still have, even on lands outside of the shrunken boundary because of that IGA.
But it gives the county more power, right?
It doesn't give the county more power. It limits Springfield's authority. And your authority. So the county becomes the decision-maker for certain things that today it would be a joint decision between Springfield and the county. And again, that IGA would preserve Springfield's role in some of it if it would somehow affect the groundwater zones that they have out there.
Thank you. So I think we're ready to vote on this. So all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and
6.
And Mike. That was Mike.
Oh, Mike's with us. Okay. All right. 6 in favor and in opposition, 2. It passes. So then we move on to the last item we have this evening, and that's the disposition of surplus property. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And Renee and Mike will make the presentation, and then we'll be here to answer questions and take your direction.
Thank you. We're here to ask you to consider the sale of the quarter-block surface lot located at 8th and High to the Shed Institute for the Arts. As you know, the Shed has been interested, inquiring this property for the purpose of growing their existing music school and performance space. And as we've discussed really recently, on a number of occasions, the arts businesses are a key part of revitalization of downtown. Nonprofit arts and culture organizations in this community contribute $49 million of economic impact. And the Shed is just one of those businesses that contribute to this economic driver. An expanded Shed Institute for the Arts will contribute greatly to our local economies, prosperity, and the growing art and culture momentum that is currently underway in our downtown. downtown. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike to talk to you about the deal points that were discussed.
And I'm just going to briefly review the draft outline of terms as they currently sit for the Shed's proposed purpose. That property is at the corner of Eighth and High, that's the southwest corner of Eighth and High, and it's about a quarter-block piece, 25,600 square feet. But after the requested easements are removed, the usable square footage is about 24,800 feet. Site is currently a surface parking lot with 84 parking spaces. Shed intends to use the property, as Renee was saying, to expand classroom space, provide additional performance space, and potentially incorporate retail music space in their plan. The Shed's plan would be a significant redevelopment, as Renee was saying, and contribute to the downtown goals of promoting activity in general, arts activity in specific, and also promoting a denser pattern of redevelopment. Purchase price that's been proposed is the appraised value, at $800,000, and that's a recent appraisal. The price is equal to about $32 a square foot, and that's after the easement space has been removed from the total square footage. City is seeking easements of five feet along the existing city space on the Eighth Avenue face, as well as five feet along the face of the property that's currently owned by the Shed, to the east of the city's property across High Street. And those easements would be used for future right-of-way or other public space improvements. Other conditions include 10% deposit on this purchase, that's after the council's approval takes place, if it does, a 60-day due diligence period for the Shed as a prospective owner, a closing date within 90 days of the close of that diligence period, and an agreement on public parking access that has to be worked out. And the manager's recommendation tonight is to move forward with the disposition of the property to the Shed Institute for the Performing Arts, consistent with the outline of terms included in Attachment B.
You ready for questions?
Ready.
Oh, City Manager, would you remind us of the memo you sent, when you sent it?
That was sent, I don't remember the specific date, it could have been in March or so, which we sent to the council. Our intent to, we're working with the Shed on the disposition of the property, and had been really for the last couple of years anyhow, and had been trying to come to an agreement with them that we can bring to the council. And what I mentioned was, is that we would be back in front of the council, we'd anticipate in April or May, with a recommendation, which is what we're coming with now. Is that what the memory you were thinking about?
Did you receive any questions, or did any issues come up?
At that time, I don't remember receiving any response at all, that's correct. I don't remember receiving anything.
Okay, questions? Yes.
We've actually talked about this project off and on, for the, I can remember the last two, three, maybe even longer. And I know that at different times, part of my reluctance was based on whether or not this property would be necessary for City Hall, for whatever rebuild or whatever went on. The way things have been progressing and what the potential is for City Hall, the way we're currently talking about it, I'm less concerned that we need this property for City Hall. I think we can do what we need to do, and this is no longer a critical component. The other piece for this was, was it useful in property transactions that might involve the property directly to the east of it? Remember the old Whole Foods discussion and that whole area? And I no longer feel like that's really that important relationship either. And so, I think those two red flags for me have, over time, gone away. And the other consideration is that the Shed's a great organization, and everything that Renee says about the need to encourage the arts downtown, I think is important, and this, from what I've been hearing from them for the past at least couple of years, is this, they consider this a significant part of what they plan to do, to revitalize, or to rebuild or build out the Shed, particularly its educational component. And so, since some of what my concerns are have been taken off the table, and my desire to see the Shed's expansion plans move forward, I think maybe that things have converged, and this looks like it's a, I think it's a reasonable thing to do. So, at this point, the way the deal currently looks, I'm okay with it, I think it's fine.
I have Councilor Brown, and then Councilor Zelenka. Councilor Brown?
Yeah, so they're going to buy the property for $800,000, so that's correct. Did you speak with anybody else about this property? Was there any other interest? I've never seen a for-sale sign out on the property.
No, we did not do an RFP process for this particular...
Is there any reason why not quite not do that? Why not inform other parties that the property was for sale?
Well, we've been working with them on a project that would be fair market value, and helping us achieve various goals that we have for the downtown. So, the route that we took was to come to you with this, and that's the city manager's prerogative to do that on.
Well, I think the proper, I think it would have been better to inform other possible investors and developers to, that, wow, okay, here's, it's a quarter of a block, and it's a great location. And then, don't get me wrong, I have nothing against the Shed whatsoever. I think they're a great organization. Their classes are great, their recital space is wonderful, and I think it's a great, they're a great organization, and they have a great thing going already, and they are a very important component of the arts downtown, there's no question about it. But they own property across the street, right? They have a parking lot across the street that they could use for, I mean, you know, we're getting to be a bigger downtown, there's, it's like New York, you know? So, you have your other building across the street, it's no big deal. It'd be better to have it contiguous, but if we do this, we're blocking off all other possibilities. I personally think it'd be a great place for housing, that half a block that the city owns, those two parking lots, housing and commercial. And it just seems like, to talk to only one potential buyer, oh, no, we've limited our choices down to one. And it's possible that there would be no other interested buyers for that property at this point in time, but we don't know that. Now, we don't know. If we go ahead and approve this right of way, we'll never know. There might be something neater, maybe they would pay more money. I mean, we just, it seems like a funny way to do business to me. So, will they just, they probably don't, they probably have some kind of rough design for the building they want to put there. Are they going to provide parking? Is that part of the, you know, have you seen a conceptual drawing of what they might put there, any?
Have not seen a drawing. Discussions with them over the years have been that they hope to use property in the downtown, parking garages and other surface parking lots, to supplement any parking that they would need. They do have a concern, a lot of the people who are enrolled in classes, the vast majority are young kids, and so they have some concern about people crossing the street, so that was one of their motivations for moving quickly in advance of building the building, to have parking closer to. But their intent, their stated intent is to move forward with a fundraising campaign for the overall development of the site relatively immediately.
Okay, but some of the logic for this escapes me. I mean, presumably, parents will be parking across the street at their existing parking lot, and they will have to cross the street to get to the new building, so, and it's a city, I mean, people have to cross the streets all the time.
Now, that would certainly be true once the development takes place.
Yeah, and, well, so is there any thought to like, you know, a lot of people park there now, I do, and I don't care, I can always find a parking space, but I mean, that's an important lot for city employees. Where will they go? Is any thought given to, I mean, there might be spaces underneath the old City Hall.
That was one of the conditions that we would negotiate, at least in the short term, a parking agreement until their plans move progress further down the road.
Usually their space across the street?
Well, and that's their space, I'm not sure, I mean, they would need to be the ones to discuss what their future plans are for that particular property, but...
And I'll try to add some additional, and one to your previous question, Mayor, I got a text that says, I sent the email on March 8, and I did receive a response from you and Allen, so I just want to correct that for sure. Just a little bit more context, and I know Chris mentioned it, is, as the Shed has, the Ralphs have been very interested in the property for a number of years, we've been talking with them, and part of the conversation has been just sort of marking time until a final decision, or decision was made on the City Hall. And it was made to keep it on the current block, which then allowed that property to at least be considered, that's sort of a little bit of that timing. You know, I know they've had concerns over the years about people crossing the street from their current parking lot over to the Shed. I know they do have a drawing of the proposed expansion of the Shed property that would take up that quarter of a block. I don't recall the details of the parking, I think Mike has talked about them being in the rest of the parts of the downtown. That the, having the legal access or owning the piece of property allows them to go out and fundraise for that expansion. They would expect that to take several years, so they wouldn't be turning dirt immediately. I know in the past, they've talked about potentially their current parking lot, they may choose to sell that, that piece that's across the street, so that's, of course, their property, which they could do. What we've said is, we at least want to make sure we have an easement for the, part of the route to the river. And so, as far as sending it out as an RFP, just to expand on what Renee mentioned, it feels like it accomplishes a number of goals for us in the downtown. Expansion of the Arts and Culture District, particularly as an economic hub and an engine there, which is appropriate. Two, it's, we're not subsidizing the purchase of the property, also it's fair market value, and so we would expect to get that from any potential buyer. And so, from our perspective, it's just an opportunity to further advance the goals of downtown to this particular sale, which is why we're bringing it to you as essentially a sole source, as opposed to going out through the RFP process.
I see. Well, I do, I don't know how much time, is it just 11, 10? I'll need another round.
Okay. Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, well, I tend to favor this idea, this project. I think, you know, the Shed is a proven entity, a proven partner in the arts, and that having a large arts institution smack in the middle of downtown, I think will be a real benefit and great enhancement to our community. I don't happen to frequent the Shed myself, or take lessons there or anything, but I did get a tour, and I can see they're bursting at the seams. And if they're able to realize their capital project, which I think they will be, they would bring even more people downtown with the services and the lessons and the performances that they would host there. So, I think it's a real, would be a real asset to downtown, much greater of an asset than a surface parking lot at this point, although those are needed here, too. So, you probably don't have the answers to these questions yet, because I think it's too far out in the future. And you did mention you think it might take them, they think it might take several years to raise the capital. And then, would we be able to estimate anything in terms of what the taxable value of the property, how that would be enhanced by this potential project? Is there any way to give an estimate?
Shed is actually a 501(c)(3), they probably would pay no tax.
Darn.
The exception to that is if there is a for-profit entity that's incorporated inside the Shed's operation, there would be some minor tax paid on perhaps some retail square footage, but otherwise.
Okay.
I did forget to mention, I think I forgot to mention, that we have specified a first right of refusal on the property as well. If the Shed fails to go forward and seeks to sell the property in the future, and they had a bona fide offer, and we matched that offer, we could exercise first right to buy the property back, should we so desire.
That's good to know. And can you tell us what the current parking revenue is that we get from that property, and how that compares to the cost of maintenance?
It's just over $30,000. And I have that number, but I don't have the cost of maintenance for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Zelenka?
Do you know if this property is in the downtown urban renewal district, or the riverfront urban renewal?
No, it's in the riverfront district.
It is in the urban, it is in the riverfront?
Yes.
District, okay. So, the proceeds of this don't go back to the general fund, they would go to the riverfront re, or urban renewal district?
The property is, Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, the property is owned by the city of Eugene, so the proceeds would go to the city.
Go back to the general fund, not into the urban renewal district?
Correct.
Oh, okay, good. That's good to know. And I, like Counselor Pryor, thought that we should keep this in reserve if we need it for the City Hall and all that. That was going to shake out, and we've done a lot of work on that, and I don't think we're going to need it. So, I think it could be used at a higher purpose than a surface parking lot. I like the Shed's plan to build it out, it seems like a good one, and enhances the arts and culture and education, so, in the downtown district there, and I think that all that's good. The fact that it's a recent appraisal, a year ago, May 2012, that's a fair price at fair market value, so there's no sweetheart deal here, and there's no subsidy, and the money can be used in the general fund is good. I do have a bit of a problem with the process. I think that we generally should do these sales in a more open, transparent, competitive environment, and solicit more than one buyer in general. But this, and I hope the next time we do a surplus sale property, that follows kind of those rules. But what are the rules about that, Mr. City Manager, about the sale of surplus properties?
The city code contains several different provisions on how property can be disposed of. One option is to declare property surplus. Council has an opportunity to weigh in on whether it should be declared surplus. If it is, then the manager follows one process for that. Another option is if another governmental entity is interested, there's a specific provision that says through an IGA, the manager can come to you, propose to sell it to the other governmental entity, you can approve it or say no. Another provision, which is the one that's being used here, says that the manager, anytime he has an offer to sell property that he believes is reasonable, he can bring that to you, propose it, and you can reject it, you can accept it, you can say, go back and negotiate differently. You could say, not interested in a sole source, go back and RFP it. But the code contains several different provisions. The one that is actually typically used, when it comes down to you making and adopting a motion, is actually this process. Sometimes that's preceded by an RFP, sometimes it's not.
Yeah, okay. So, this one's within the code by a long shot.
Yes.
So, I think every one of these surplus properties is going to be kind of a unique circumstance, and the ones that don't have a specific use that we haven't, that would, I think, then I think a more process would be, a more open competitive process would probably be, would be a better choice. In this case, I'm okay with the sale. I have another question, which is somewhat related, but the property across the street to the east is a surface parking lot, and I know in certain areas around town, people have tried to convert lots into surface parking lots, and were prohibited from doing that because they had to do all the improvements that were required to make that a surface parking lot. And I'm wondering why that lot never had to go through that process?
I've only been in town for 24 years, for that 24 years, the majority of that lot has been a surface parking lot, although the...
With some houses on it.
Well, that was a piece of property to the north of the alley. The Shed's property is to the south of the alley. Excuse me, I have that backwards. Shed's property is to the north of the alley. The property at the south of the alley had the housing on it. And my understanding is that parking lot was a parking lot for the Baptist Church for some period of time, and that's why the Shed ended up owning the parking lot across the street from the church.
The north side of the lot.
Right.
But what about the south side? That was housing.
Yes, you're right, it was houses, and there must have been some legislation that was taken at that time, and I just, I don't have history on that. Okay. So, ahead, thanks.
So, I've got Counselor Evans and Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to remind, this is a lot worse things that can be there than the expansion of the Shed. You know, there's all kinds of, you know, bars and other things, and we could also invite another MPT controversy, which I don't think any of us want to deal with any more than we have to. So, I think that this is great for expanding our arts footprint downtown. It gives us some opportunities to diversify our economic base, and, you know, I think that, you know, it does the things that this city wants to do in terms of providing that economic diversity within the downtown core, or to Counselor Brown's point, even to the edge of it, that gives us the kind of development that we really want to have, particularly in this area. So, I'm in support.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes, you can, after Counselor Taylor.
Me, too, Mayor.
Your second round.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's a good use of the property. For a while, I thought we would, might want to put a police station there, but unfortunately, we put it in some other place. But I was surprised that we... But I was surprised that we were not seeking other offers, and that we just accepted a certain amount. I think if we could get more money for it, we should maybe, maybe at least consider it. Maybe we wouldn't want another use there, but we should at least consider it. And I wonder if this is selling for less, or appraised at less, because of the condition of City Hall across the street? And I have another question. You said write a first refusal. If we, if they're selling it, if they decide to sell it in the future, and we were going to buy it back, would it be for the same price that we sold it for?
Actually, the, the way that provision works is if they have an offer for the purchase of the property, and if it's a bona fide offer, we could match that offer, or not, at our option. But that, our option would be to match an incoming offer for the purchase of the property.
You wouldn't have a guarantee that you could get it back for the same amount we sold it for?
No.
No. Like the school board's Civic Stadium, that $1 thing, we couldn't. I'm really concerned about, not about the use, but about not asking for any other offers. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. This decision actually gives me great heartburn, because I know the Rowlands, and I like them very much, they're fantastic people, and the organization that they've built there is commendable, it's a fantastic organization, and serves our city tremendously well. My concern is which is, has been voiced with the process a little bit here. I would have liked to have seen something that, to look at all of the city's options for the sale of that, in order to maximize what we might get. I suppose I lean towards approval because of a lot of the reasons that you already mentioned, but I will start from the process. I certainly would be in favor of a provision that gives us first right of refusal to purchase the property at any point. And you grant, in my understanding, that the first part of this extends all the way to eighth?
It's a profile.
Yes. It's a full quarter block, so it's bounded by sidewalk right of way. The provision that we've asked for is an additional easement that would cut into the property on the north side, as it places eighth, by an additional five feet, which would provide for a much more generous either sidewalk, or some of the kind of right-of-way use, or even some open space use.
Thank you. I want to add also that, I know there isn't support amongst my colleagues for the idea. I have always enjoyed, set together the idea of a pot that extends from the pot block to the area to the riverfront. I have always thought that was a good idea, and this will include it. But all those things considered, I suppose, on balance, I'd still probably stay.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Clark. We're going to go now into round two. Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I, you know, I think we should reject this and send it back for an RFP proposal, and try to, and try to see if there's any other interest out there. There again, it's not, I have absolutely nothing against the Shed, I admire what they're doing, it's terrific. But it's hard to me, I mean, you know, they're not going to pay any taxes. They're not paying taxes on their lot across the street. If we could get, who, we don't know what could go there. We don't know what the highest use of the property is, because we've never talked to anybody except the Shed. So it's possible someone might be interested to put some housing there, maybe commercial, maybe retail, maybe a mix, we don't know. They would pay taxes. So, and it may be that the Rowlands are the only people that are interested in the property. That's possible. So if we, if we send it back for an RFP, and they were the only ones, then that's a completely different matter. But we will never know what the other possibilities are unless we ask. I mean, I, I park there almost every day. There's never been a for-sale sign, or any indication that that property was, was available. This might actually come as kind of a surprise to people, that it's for sale, and only one buyer is being considered. Maybe, I don't know. But people in the development community, so, you know, if it was one of these other projects, they would be paying full taxes on all the improvements on, on the property, which the city desperately needs. Now, it's also nice to get revenue from surplus property being sold. I understand that part, too. In fact, I've got a question. You said they would pay 10% down, $80,000, and then there'd be a due diligence period of three months for, did you say three months?
Yes, 90 days.
90 days. Okay. And then do they, if they decide to go ahead, do they pay-
Sixty days of due diligence, and closing within 90 days of the close of diligence.
Okay, so that's 150 days?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and then would they pay the remain, the balance then, at closing? I see. Okay. And then, I mean, you know, the first right of refusal, so we could, theoretically, we could sell that property, and then something could happen to their finances, and they could put it up for sale. We could end up buying it back at a higher price.
In our option.
In the option, yeah, that, which I don't even, I don't know why we would want to buy it back if we want to sell it, so. Seems like, I suppose, a standard provision to have in there, unless we absolutely didn't like the use that the new owner was going to put to it. I can think of all kinds of things we wouldn't want to see there. I don't know. I don't, I don't think I can support this. I think it makes more sense to delay it a little bit, put it back for an RFP, see if there's any other interest out there, see if we can't, A, get a better price, B, get somebody that's going to put a worthy project there that would pay taxes. I think that makes better sense. And then if, then if they're also the only ones, then seriously consider selling it.
Back to Counselor Brown and Counselor Taylor's point, I, you know, I understand where you're coming from on this. One of the things, one of the questions I have for the manager is this, is what kind of process can we develop post this vote in terms of how we go about disposal of this kind of property? And what kind of, what kind of rigor can we build into that process that assures that we're getting, you know, the, the wide spectrum of interest in these properties that have, you know, significant value to the city, not only at the initial, you know, purchase price, but also down the line as an investment in terms of the greater public benefit over the long haul?
The, and Glenn, you can weigh in more. The process is actually already there, in the sense that, as Glenn mentioned, there's a variety of ways in which property can be disposed of, one of which is, the city manager brings to the council for your consideration a specific proposal. The council always has the option to say, "We would prefer to go out for an RFP," or what, any other process that you choose to use. And we've used other processes. At 858 Pearl, we actually advertised that one for sale, put up a sign and advertised it like you would any other particular piece of property. We did the same thing with 901 Franklin, didn't get any buyers for that particular project. And so that's, that is a, it's always at the council's discretion on how you would choose to move forward on that. So that is a viable process right now.
If I can add?
Go ahead.
So if the council wanted to say, you know, "From this point forward, manager, we don't want you to bring us a proposal," unless it's had some kind of advertising, RFP, request of, you know, letter of interest, you could pass a motion to give the manager that direction, which would be, would not, as a motion, it would not be legally binding, so the manager could still bring you something consistent with the code, but he would do that risking your wrath when it comes time for your evaluation of him. You could also amend the code to say, you know, "There are provisions in the code that provide different options. You can change the code. You just have to go through the public hearing and notice and ordinance adoption process to do that."
So what, give me, give me more of an idea, what are the benefits of you having this greater latitude and discretion of how you approach this kind of sale? Or, you know, you know, I don't know whether we should, we should just, you know, do it as, as you say, in terms of, you know, direction versus changing the code? So, I mean, what are, what are the pros and cons of, of you having that level of discretion, the city having a level of discretion in terms of being able to maneuver around with this? What does it really give us at the end of the day, when we, you know, are entering into these kinds of agreements?
I don't know when that was put in place, if there was some intent at that point.
The, it was put in place probably 20 years ago. The, I believe that the idea at that time was to provide a range of options and flexibility to deal with both a variety of circumstances and changing circumstances. The authority always resides with the council to approve or reject. Or to say, "We're not ready to approve, manager. We want you to go out," whether it's with an RFP, or a letter of interest, or whatever. At times, over the last couple decades, managers have handled different property transactions differently, depending on the circumstances. Sometimes the council gave specific direction, whether acting as the council, or acting as the Urban Renewal Agency. Sometimes the city manager would send a memo to the council saying, "Here's what I intend to do. If you have any concerns about that, let him know," and then he can schedule a work session. So before you get to this stage, somebody has said, "Manager, we don't like the direction you're going, let's talk about it."
Which we did in this case.
Right. So the, having, from the lawyer's point of view, having the flexibility to deal with different circumstances differently is a good thing, especially since the final authority resides with you to say yes or no. Whatever the manager brings to you, you have absolute discretion to say, "We don't like that." And the answer is no. Or, "We don't like that. If you change this provision, we'll agree to it." And then the manager can go back and see whether the purchaser is willing to do that. So you have the final authority. Having the different provisions in the code allows the manager, and frankly, you, too, the ability to deal with different circumstances differently.
Okay. You, Mayor?
Yes, after Counselor Zelenka. Counselor Zelenka.
Not related to that, but back on the proceeds, the property that we sold to the credit union, that was actually owned by the Urban Renewal District, and therefore the proceeds go back there, which is different. Correct. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the night you gave due diligence period apply only to the Shed. In other words, during that timeframe, are we obligated to the sale from the moment we take the initial money? And is only there option to, to put anything that's in that sale?
I started this inaccuracy, the, it's actually a 60-day due diligence period, and then at the close of due diligence, there's 90 days to close the transaction, all of which would be predicated on a purchase and sale agreement, which would include those provisions. So we would enter into a purchase and sale agreement, and then the deposit would occur, and then all of the provisions, including the due diligence, would apply. So during that time, we would be committed to sell the property under a certain set of terms. The Shed would be committed to buy the property under a certain set of terms. So yes, we would be committed to a single party.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking the question about the term to that period was to find out if it would seem impossible if some other buyer emerged from the either to offer us more money. If we had an option to accept this, but obviously we don't, so that's not an option here. I was just looking at it to set it off my concern about the process, but I, I think I still. But, thank you.
I think we're ready to put a motion on the table.
Before I do that, I'd like to, I'd like to weigh in on this. I think what I'm afraid we're going to do is start a process to process something that already has a process, which is typical of Eugene. The way Glenn explained the different options, I think, is perfectly legitimate. This, you know, we pay a city manager a pretty good salary to make decisions to a certain point, and then it always comes back to us. If you don't like the way that a particular process went, you know, it comes to us for the final decision. We can make the, the vote to stop it and send it back. But I think we're starting to get kind of wound up in the minutia of the whole process that we're looking at. I think this is a great deal. I mean, the flexibility in it. If a willing buyer comes to the city manager, I think he needs that flexibility to take some immediate action, to try to hammer out a deal. In this particular case, I know it's been in discussion at one point or another, to one level or another at the council, a number of times over a number of years. So I, you know, and plus, you know, it's hard to say anything bad about the Shed. I mean, they're great, they're great people, they do, you know, a great service. Arts is important to our community, so, you know, I'm in favor of the motion that I'm going to put out on, on various levels. And with that, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the Shed Institute for the Arts for the disposition of the quarter-block property located at 8th Avenue and High Street, consistent with the terms and conditions included in Attachment B.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Counselor Brown.
I have an alternate motion, and, which I'll speak to if I can. I move to direct the city manager to start an RFP process for the sale of the city-owned one-quarter block at 8th and High.
Moved in seconded.
Okay, thank you. You know, there's very few properties left in downtown like this, unencumbered by existing old buildings, or any known environmental problems that necessitate an expensive cleanup. It's really a prime piece of property, it's a great location. And to just, you know, sell it to the first person that comes along, when, to the exclusion, I mean, you're excluding a lot of people who didn't even know that this was for sale. This is, this is a problem here with this, with the way this is, has, you know, sifted out. So, you know, yes, it's a process, but we've excluded all the other possibilities. Now, we just have one. We don't know how many possibilities, what the other possibilities would be. And plus, it's likely that they would mostly be property-tax-paying things that would be built there. And it may be that no one else is interested, that's a possibility, but we'll never know if we go ahead and approve this tonight. If we send it to the RFP, we could spend a few more months to see if there's any other interest there, and see if we could get, you know, improvements, there'd be a little competition for the Shed. They have a property they can build on now. They already have that. They don't absolutely, positively, life or death, need this property. So it just makes better sense to do that. They've been talking about it for a couple of years, I guess. What's a few more months? They're still going to want that property, and if they're the only ones, then that's fine. I'll go for it. But I, it just seems like a mistake to do it this way. We just, we just limit our possibilities this way. And it just makes better sense to spend a little more time. How, I don't know how much would, what would the, if, if we did this, if council passed this, what, how long is the RFP process? What would this entail? Like three or four months, six months, seven months?
We have run many RFP processes in the past, as you're well aware, and they vary based on the complexity of the property. Typically, the RFPs, I'm sort of generalizing in my mind to 90 days. So it's relatively short process to get the responses back from those who want to respond. And then typically, there is some kind of process that is spun on that. The best example I can think of offhand is the LCC property, which went through, I believe, three or four RFP processes. And there was a committee that had comments, did analyses, that analyses was included in a recommendation that came through the manager back to council. And that process could take another 30 to 60 days.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, it's like, it's, we're not talking about a deal killer for the Shed. I think they would, if they waited a couple of years, they'll wait another two, three, four months. And who knows? We might get a really neat alternate project, put up a for-sale sign, there's never been one there that I know of, start the RFP process, put a notice in the paper, and the trade journals will pick it up, and, you know, we'll get something to- know, we'll, we'll get something to, to compare it to and evaluate. So that's the reason I'm offering this motion. Thank you.
So now we're going to vote on Counselor Brown's motion. Oh, you want to speak?
No, I think this makes total sense, too. And most likely, we would end up with the Shed buying it anyway, but I think that it's only right to see whether we could get more money. And even if we got more money from some other place, if we decided this was the best use, we could still take this use, couldn't we?
Yes, as long as the criteria in the RFP--
Legally.
Didn't say that the determinative factor is who offers the most money.
Right. So I think it's only right to give people a chance if there is anyone else who wants it, and to find out whether this is the best amount of, the most money you can get for it, for good cause.
All those in favor of Counselor Brown's motion, please indicate. Two in opposition. One, two, three, four, five. Counselor Clark?
We're naturally in the--
Six. In opposition, it goes down. We're back to the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Clark?
Yeah.
Seven in opposition. One, it passes. And with that, we are done with the business of the day. Thank you all very much.
See you tomorrow. Tomorrow.